Good evening and welcome to tonight's school board meeting from October 26. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Mr. Romano, roll call.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Present.
Mr. Rudy.
Present.
Mr. Schaaf.
Present.
Mrs. Delaney.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
All present.
Do we have any cards to speak at this evening, Steven?
There's none.
No cards. Moving on to recognition.
Yes, this evening we have with us Mrs. Megan Merrill. She is a second grade teacher at Clough Pike Elementary. And she has received the Emerging Leader Award from the Ohio Council of Teachers of Mathematics. This award is presented to a current mathematics education teacher who has taught five years or less. And this teacher has had to have demonstrated leadership potential in mathematics education in the state of Ohio through a specific project and involvement in the field. And so first this evening, please recognize Megan Merrill as an outstanding math teacher at Clough Pike Elementary. We are very proud of you, Megan. Thank you for coming. So keep going out.
Is this good, though?
Yeah.
Can you kind of smile and wave hello?
Could you pull your mask down, Megan? Can you pull your mask down for a second?
Yes.
I just want to be able to recognize you. Okay.
It's hard for us not to see him face.
It bothers me.
And see you again and congratulate you.
And then I'm still smiling at her.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Mrs. Beth Flanagan is a fourth grade teacher at Willowville Elementary. And she has received the murder, not murder, Myrtle Miller Mary Jane Warner Award from the Ohio Council of Teachers of Mathematics. This award is presented for exemplary mathematics teaching. And it's given to one elementary teacher every year in the state of Ohio. So we are very proud to recognize her with this outstanding mathematics teacher here in West Claremont. And so Beth, she has a lot of hardware when it comes to being an excellent math teacher. So come, come join us here. This evening we've been joined by Mr. Jones and Mr. Thacker. They're principals who I know are very proud of their accomplishments. I have to tell you what's been really amazing going into their classrooms this school year. They're math teachers that don't just like work algorithms or work problems on the board. They are creating math moments all the time. And their classroom is filled with mathematic manipulations, like tools that kids can use to count and to have number sense. And usually they have bins of these things and it's just something that the class uses. Well, they've had to individually create these for each child. And so their room is just filled with stuff that kids are using to bring their mathematics alive. It was a lot of extra work, takes a lot of shifts that they had to make in their teaching, but they dedicated to that and created that for students and they're using it on a daily basis. And so it's just one, 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 small example of the excellence that these two ladies bring to the classroom to go above and beyond to serve our students and bring a really challenging subject of mathematics to life. So thank you, ladies, very much for the excellence that you model and for representing our school district in such a wonderful way and making mathematics your passion, something that you're sharing with our students.
And I said before, Mrs. Flanagan, that you're a frequent flyer here at the Board for recognition. And we're very, very proud of that. You do such a great job in the classroom as well as in your voluntary time, supporting not only the kids in the district, but the other families, their entire family. So thank you for all that you do and for yet another recognition. And Megan, you're a few years behind her, but I feel like you're going to be following in her footsteps that we're going to be seeing you as well frequently. Congratulations to both of you.
Now, these ladies, they use data to drive their instructions. So they've got a lot of analysis to do tonight. They've got a lot of papers to grade. They've got a lot of work to do to individualize that instruction for our students. So they're going to make their way.
Absolutely.
That's what they're going to do. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, can you pull your mask down? I've never met you. Nice to meet you. I'm Jim.
I was getting ready to say, yeah, it was nice to see Mr. Jones show.
My pleasure, Ralph, to a great start.
Yes, we hear good things.
Yes. Welcome to the district.
All right. Mr. Romano.
Good, thank you. Item four on your agenda is the approval of the minutes. These are the minutes for the meeting on October 12th. It was a regular meeting. Recommendation to approve the minutes of October 12th as presented.
You've heard the recommendation of the treasurer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Rudy and a second by Mr. Chumley. Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We have donations as listed. First donation is to Clough Pike Elementary. They received a donation from the Walmart East Gate for school supplies and student workbooks. Second donation is for Willowville Elementary. Received a Keurig and K cups from the Willowville PTO to show appreciation to the staff. From John and Phoebe Tribas donated 18 backpacks for students in need at Holly Hill Elementary. And the Benevity Community Impact Fund donated $106.08 to Holly Hill Elementary, which will be used for books for students. Recommendation to accept these donations. Author, excuse me, the recommendation is to accept these donations as presented.
Thank you for that. You've heard the recommendation of the treasurer. Do we have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Delaney and a second.
Second.
Mr. Schaaf. Discussion.
I just want to point out that Phoebe Tribas has been retired for, I think, longer than me, and I've been retired for seven years, but she's still giving back to the schools and that's wonderful. She's a wonderful educator in person.
And she taught in our district?
Yes.
Where did she teach at?
Merwin, I think.
Nice.
Excellent teacher. I was never in a classroom, but I've heard nothing but great things about her from parents, kids, administrators.
Nice. Thank you for that. All right. Roll call.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. 5.02 is a bid advertisement. This bid advertisement is for the abatement and demolition of the former Brantner Elementary School. Just a note about that bid advertisement really is broken down into two parts. One is for the abatement. The second one is for the demolition of that building. So it's recommended to accept the resolution authorizing the advertising of these bids for the abatement and demolition of the former Brantner Elementary School as presented.
You've heard the recommendation from the treasurer. I'll put that on the floor in the form of a motion and ask for a second. Second. Mrs. Delaney. Discussion.
So this was the, we discussed this in our facilities committee. And this is for, so the abatement is to clear out the asbestos and all of that. And then the demolition is to obviously tear the building down, but also to grade and seed. And so that would put that property back at, you know, to, and this will state for either whatever we were to use that for. But having discussions with Lance, it's been that for us to continue to use that building would cost us a lot more than it is to tear it down. Because if we were to use it even for non-necessarily K-12, you know, instruction, that we use it for preschool or whatever, it still needs millions of dollars of work that would just, it's not worth it, so.
And for it to sit idle, I think, would be a detriment to the community.
I agree. And I mean, this is money is part of the OFCC package anyway. So this isn't anything that we're, you know, that we're spending on that we're not getting from the state anyway, so.
Anything else? Roll call.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item 5.03 is an amendment to the appropriation measure. There are two items there. Both of them are for state and federal grants. One is for the broadband grant that we talked about in previous months to have that started. So we needed to wait till the certificate was approved on that, but things are in motion there. That money, we have to spend that by December 31st. The other one was a smaller grant. It's also a technology grant. Additional $8,100 for that. Recommendation to approve the resolution supplementing and amending the annual appropriation for fiscal year 2021 as presented.
You've heard the recommendation of the treasurer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Schaaf.
Second.
Mr. Chumley. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item 5.04, there's two lease agreements tonight, but we'll take the first one. This is a lease agreement authorization with Mercy Health. This agreement is for 1341 Clough Pike. It's specifically for the dental space. So it's, and this is really, as we discussed in the facility meeting, it's really to operationalize that lease agreement and make sure that what we're responsible for, we do, and what Mercy Health is responsible for, they are doing. So it's recommended to approve the resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Mercy Health to utilize the space at 1341 Clough Pike.
You've heard the recommendation of the treasurer. Do we have a motion? So moved. Mrs. Delaney and a second.
Second.
Mr. Schaaf. Discussion.
So this was, as Mr. Romano said, we discussed this in facilities as well, that this is at the Wolves Wellness Center. This is for the dental. And this isn't necessarily the financial portion of the lease agreement. It's more about the operational, as he said, about, as Lance described it, like who maintains the area, who cleans it. He had mentioned that he wasn't as, not that he doesn't have confidence in our custodial staff, but cleaning a medical space isn't necessarily in their realm of expertise. And so this formalizes that type of, you know, that Mercy's in charge of cleaning the medical space and other type of operational issues. So this is just formalizing those issues and not necessarily a financial type portion of the lease agreement.
Yeah, caring for the medical equipment.
Sure.
So that we are not liable if something would happen.
Right. And then the next one that ties in the same where it's more of an operational, and we can discuss that after we, when that comes up, but it's similar where it's an operational and not necessarily going over financial information.
Anything further?
Are these things that have been happening or just putting words to them?
Yeah, I think, well, and the dental space hasn't been, it's been open, but not for very long. So, but yes, I think this is more of a formalized, you know, just so that we're, it's clear who's responsible for what. Just, yeah.
We haven't been cleaning the, that medical equipment, but I believe Mr. Perry is looking, all the i's dotted, t's crossed.
Yeah.
So that there's a very defined.
It's not gray.
Yes, there is no gray.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion approved.
And as mentioned, there's a second lease agreement, and this is our lease agreement with Union Township Community Improvement Corporation. And it is for the transportation facility and very similar. Things have been operational with that, but this is again, is to really kind of memorialize the operations on it. In other words, what we are responsible for and what the lessor is responsible for. So it's recommended to approve the resolution authorizing a lease agreement for transportation facilities with Union Township Community Improvement Corporation.
You've heard the recommendation of the treasurer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Schaaf and a second.
Second.
Mrs. Delaney. Discussion.
So this is also, as Lance described, operational. It was a, to have in writing who's responsible for what. I think his exact words were if, if one of our employees or one of the employees there, you know, puts a hole in the wall, we're responsible for that. If it's something of roof, something structural, then CIC, UT CIC is responsible. So it, and then I think he mentioned something also about like snow removal and other type of operational type of issues. It's just having them in writing so we're clear on who, who's responsible for what.
Anything further? Roll call.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Last item is item 5.06. These are the financial statements, bills paid, list of investments for the month of September. It's recommended to approve the financial statements, bills paid, list and investment for September 2020.
You've heard the recommendation of the treasurer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Discussion. Do you think in the future meetings that we could have a little bit more detail as to the numbers and the specifics?
Want to give some of that right now, right after this?
Perfect. Usually we do that before we.
Okay.
Ask for approval, but that's okay. We do appreciate that. Do you want to go ahead with roll call?
Sure. Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Regarding the comments, first of all, two things upfront. Just would like to make a note of compliment to the treasurer's office staff. We did have an in-service with support staff this past Friday. It was a good two-hour meeting. It was really to cover some basics and some grounding. I think we first wanted to do that before we started looking at different ways of trying to improve the processes that we were going through. So it was good for our staff to connect with the people out in the field. I think the big message we tried to do is that our role is to support them in all the efforts they do. So not to, not to hand them rules, but really to set up processes that are hopefully supporting them with that. Secondly, and you heard Mr. Schaaf and Mrs. Delaney comment, I just want to express the appreciation that I have for the board members to meet in the committees and superintendent's committees. It's not just an avenue for us to throw data and information at you, but I do appreciate the fact that there is some guidance and some diligence done at those meetings to make sure we're on track with different things to do that. So do appreciate that. So September 30th was really the end of our first quarter for the month. And the good news is, although there were some, you know, projections in the past because we had some cutbacks from the state, approximately $4 million, that with the budget as adjusted with those things, we are on track. So the revenues are coming in as expected. That first quarter, although it's 25% of the year, we do receive 35% of our money before September 30th, primarily because of the real estate taxes that come in with that. So total revenue through September was $28.48 million. This is just for the general fund. Of our budget, we spent 22%, so a hair under that 25%. So that was 18.7 million. So there's a net gain in that first quarter, close to $10 million. So that's kind of the high side where we start accumulating some cash. Fortunately, as we look towards October, November, December, that cash starts to get depleted because revenues are a little bit shorter because the major revenue is just the state funding. We already collected our taxes. Don't get any more real estate revenue until end of January, February, when those, the 20 bills go out, FY '20 bills go out to that. But we are on track with the projection that was made in May with the five-year forecast, which really rolled into our budget, you know, for that time period. We will also be tracking the cash flow pretty closely. We did review in the finance committee that there would be that possibility at the November meeting, there may be a resolution to issue a tax anticipation note that may go from December to probably May with a callable feature on it so that if we don't need those funds, if they, if they do come in, we can call that in March or April with that. Okay? So there is that low point. I know that Treasurer Siniger, last even May and June, kind of noted that, that that may be happening. We're going to try and avoid it if we can, but if we can't, we'll have to issue those tax anticipation notes. We also talked about the five-year forecast. So again, previous years prior to last year, it used to be done in October. That was moved forward to November. We did a first draft of that. And good news again is that although there was that setback of $4 million over FY '19 and FY '20 from the state funding as projected, one of the things that we're still on track with is to having that forecast last through 2024. I know that the commitment was made to the voters and we certainly appreciate them providing the additional funding to us. We know that was a commitment on their part to us. So we need to keep looking at our commitment to make that last through 2024. Again, you know, the members on the finance committee were on top of that, not only looking at today, but, but comments about, are we looking at what we need to do into the future for that? So, so that was there with it. The other positive thing, we also get a report from the state on the state budget. We look at that monthly and kind of the good news there is that our state seems to be recovering pretty well. You know, we're not, you know, we're not 100% up to where we should be, but it's very positive. So our anticipation is that as we predict, projected in May, that we would come back to a revenue level from the state of FY '19, kind of keeping our fingers crossed that that, that will come through and that will be there because that does help our projection with that. So coming next month is the five-year forecast. There may be a resolution on borrowing. Not too sure yet, but we're just going to fine tune that as we did it. And I'm just going to circle right back from where I started at, that I do appreciate the fact that we met twice in my first three months. And I know that was back-to-back with the facilities committee. That was kind of a long evening, probably longer than you expected with that. But I do appreciate, you know, the guidance of the board members through those committees. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Moving on to superintendent's business. Mrs. Adams.
Item 6.01 is the first policy reading of some revised and new policies. We had the policy committee review these and we'll give you some time here. We'll bring them back to you in November for final approval. So that's just an informational item at this time. A lot of reading for you guys, a lot of research. Item 6.02 is our personnel report. Dr. Foltz is not able to be here tonight, so I'm asking that you approve the personnel agenda as presented. Inside of it, we have resignation. We have a new staff member that we are employing at Willowville as the new secretary. We have an exempted staff employee that we're bringing on as a campus coordinator, some salary adjustments in the cafeteria, supplemental contracts, substitute personnel. We are, note that there is one new name added on here, and that's something that we hope to continue to grow, that we have some substitute personnel that we can add to our list. We have some unpaid leave of some of our members, the volunteer list, as well as stipend approvals that incorporate mentorships, yearbook advising, and WCOA. So I ask that you approve the personnel agenda as presented.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Rudy and a second.
Second.
Mr. Chumley. Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion approved.
Item 6.03, Mr. Overbee will come and present. It's about suspending credit and GPA standards for athletics, district-sponsored clubs and activities in light of COVID-19 disruption.
Good evening. As we came to you in June and asked for your approval to, to suspend the GPA and credit hours standards for athletics, district-sponsored clubs and activities, we're coming again tonight for that same recommendation as the Ohio High School Athletic Association made the decision to implement Constitution Article 6.19 and waive the scholarship bylaw through the first semester. As you recall, we asked that it be waived through the first quarter, and then we, we had stated that we may have to come back to you and recommend that same thing for second quarter. At this point, OHSAA has said that they will revisit this possibly, but this is only through the first semester. So instead of it, and that's how, how the resolution actually reads tonight, some of the things that, when I talk to our administrative team at the middle school and the high school level, OHSAA had talked about the various ways that schools are delivering instruction right now. Some of it's in person, some of it's hybrid, some of it's online. So to try to stay as equitable as possible for that eligibility piece. We also had some, as you know, some students who had been quarantined that were athletes that may be participating in winter sports. And just some of the timing that I talked to Mr. Gettard about and the, how incomplete would work and absences and make up time and things like that, we're running into second quarter and tryouts and things that we want to make sure that we give all students that opportunity. We're also, WCOA is based on a semester grade right now. So there are some, some technicalities with that from a pass/fail perspective that gives us some more time to work through. So for those reasons, I think it's in the best interest of our students and our student athletes to be as equitable as possible in this very unique and unprecedented times that we're in. So I ask that you recommend, I ask that you approve the resolution to temporarily suspend GPA and credit hours standards for athletics, district-sponsored clubs and activities for the second quarter.
You've heard the recommendation of Mr. Overbee, and I'll put that on the floor in the form of a motion and ask for a second.
Second.
Mr. Rudy. Discussion.
So I agree that this is something necessary, and this might be outside of the scope of this particular resolution, but I've always been disappointed that we, when we combine the schools, we lowered the participational GPA down to 1.3. And I think that that's too low. And I think that when we come out of COVID, that that's something that we need to address and start to increase. Because as we, as we're even seeing in the, in the pandemic, you know, the kids will rise to the bar. And, you know, if we set the bar higher, the kids will rise to it. And I, I think 1.3 is, is, is too low. And.
And I would agree with that. And if I may, can I give you the history on that?
Absolutely.
Being the only member of the board and probably of the district office that was here at the time.
Being the only member of the board and probably of the district office that was here at the time.
No, I, yeah, I, yeah, I remember, but yeah.
So when we merged the two high schools together, one high school, Glen Estee, had a higher GPA than Amelia. And so merging the two buildings together, we found that if we were to adopt the higher of the two GPAs, there would be a lot of ineligible kids in Amelia. And we did not want the merge to occur that we were favoring one over the other. So what we did is we adopted the younger, the lower of the two. And many of our athletes, quite honestly, are scholar athletes and are well above that, that benchmark. But I do agree that 1.3 is very generous. I, I want to thank Mr. Overby for answering the gazillion questions I've had over the, the week since he introduced this for consideration because I too have heartburn over the whole situation. But at the end of the day, it's our responsibility to do what's right for the kids, for our athletes. And this is not their doing that we've got a pandemic. It's not their doing that some are doing homeschool and disadvantaged over the others. And that's not for us to decide. Ours is to do right for them. So thank you for bringing it forward to us for consideration.
And that was actually, that was one of the first things, actions that I took when I first came on the board.
Oh, that's right, you were on.
Was, was, was that. And that was always heartburn for me. But, and I, I'm sure that there'll be one or two kids that, that get to take advantage of this for, for actually having something that might be less than 1.3. But I think the overwhelming that this will help is the kids that aren't, you know, that might have an incomplete from this or, you know, absences or something, but...
So that was one of the questions that I've asked of Mr. Overby. Okay, how many hundreds of kids are taking advantage of this situation? And he reported that it was single-digit numbers.
Yeah.
So less than 10.
I figured that would it would be.
But that's okay. It's very important for us to serve those 10 very well. And if this is what we have to do to make sure that they have that opportunity, then thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, I caught Mr. Rudy's second. It was moved by, okay, Mrs. Brinkman.
Yeah. Thank you. Can we do the vote?
Yep.
Not yet.
We haven't done it yet.
We're finishing up on our discussion.
All right, thanks.
Anything further? Roll call.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five, yes?
Motion approved.
Thank you.
So speaking of high performance, we believe that organizing ourselves in district office around Centers of Excellence that focus on performance and the educational experience and financial excellence and cultural excellence, we think working together in integrated ways is going to take us to the next level. And so tonight we have Mr. Larry Paris as well as Mr. Overby that will be speaking on kind of their pieces of the pie and what work they've been doing, how COVID-19 has impacted the nature of their work and what's ahead.
Madam President, members of the board, Mrs. Adams and Mr. Romano, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board tonight about the Technology Department, which operates under the Performance Centers of Excellence, led by Mr. Overby, our chief operating officer. The Technology Department does much of its work out in visible spaces. They're out working with users on the desk side. They're out working with teachers. They're working with administrators, supporting basically every user that we have. And they take that role very seriously as a face of the district as they represent us in their day-to-day operations. But a lot of what they do is behind the scenes, doing data integrations with our academic resources and our internal data sources, doing repairs back in our repair center to keep the devices flowing. As they're damaged, they get fixed and they get back into the hands of kids so we can keep them learning. And they do that with the sole focus of facilitating teaching and learning. So we, there's a lot that we do. We fix Chromebooks and we calibrate smartboards, but that's what we do. It's not what we're about. What we're about is providing opportunities for the kids of West Claremont to be able to pursue, pursue whatever dream they may have. And we believe that very, very strongly. So we facilitate, we, we facilitate teaching and learning in many ways, not the least of which are providing effective and relevant technology to our staff and our students, working to close the equity, equity gap for our financially insecure students, creating safe and reliable technology environments, and continuously monitoring, enhancing our cybersecurity and data privacy. So over the summer and into the first semester, we've, we've been able to make strides in a lot of areas, not the least of which was establishing support for West Claremont Online Academy. That was, that was an interesting time to not only, you know, stand that academy up, which others really did all that heavy lifting, but then we had to figure out how to make sure that we could support it adequately. And so we were able to provide devices to every student in the West Claremont Online Academy that needed a device prior to the start of school, prior to the first day. We created a whole new technical support structure for those families that included first an email communication where they could email us for support and a phone number that they could call that was answered all throughout the school day. And then we migrated the email communication to a Google form that would help us collect more relevant information so we could be more responsive on that first call back. And then we created a device repair protocols that followed the district's stop-the-spread protocols so that we can meet with these families and work on those devices that need physical repair in a safe way. We expanded one to Wolf K through 12. Of course, as you know, we've ordered 3,950 new Chromebooks to replace many of the aging Chromebooks that are really beyond their useful life. And unfortunately, those devices are on backorder. So the, the latest information we have is anywhere from the first week of November up through winter break, might be the time that we would receive those, which as you can see is a very wide window. And so we continue to be hopeful, but we continue to operate with what we do have, which through the, the networking with other local districts, as you're aware, we were able to secure over 1,200 devices to supplement what we already had on hand. And I really want to extend our gratitude to Claremont Northeastern, who sold us some of their devices that they no longer needed at an extremely affordable price, considering what they might have been able to do out in the open market. And then Sycamore Community Schools loaned us over 875 devices that we then cleaned, you know, repaired many of them, cleaned them, sanitized them and got them into the hands of kids. So that by October 8th, every student in West Claremont had a device issued to them. And WCOA, some of those families supplied their own. But every kid that we have in the, in the district now has a device to use every day. That the, the process we put all those devices through was time-intensive. It wasn't just the, you know, 1,200 and some from those two districts, but all of the devices that we had allocated for disposal over the summer had to then be quickly brought back into play and they all had to be serviced and they all had to be sanitized. And so it was really more like 3,500 devices that we had to, that we had to work with starting about mid-August when we got the word that those devices would be backordered. We've implemented a ForteGate security appliance. That is a firewall that sits between the district's network and all of the outside world, including our internet provider. It sits between there, protects us from any bad actors trying to come towards us. It, it creates a, a stopgap there, a wall. It also notifies us if there's a device inside the district that's, has some malicious or seemingly malicious activity trying to get to the outside. So it gives us early warning that we can then react and try and respond to any problem we might have. As much as we, we hope it wouldn't happen, there's still those bad emails that come through and folks click before they, they really have a chance to think. Or, or sometimes those are very well crafted and they're very crafty. It also provides traffic shaping so that we can prioritize our academic traffic so that all of our testing and all of our Pearson and our Schoology all get priority over Khan Academy, you know, YouTube or, or Netflix or some of these other lesser important, but sometimes still relevant tools. And then it also provides an additional layer of security, some of which we talked about. It has more functions that we will continue to leverage as time goes forward. And the beauty of this device was it was replacing an aging traffic shaper that was end-of-life that we were going to need to replace anyway. And it was half the cost of the replacement of that device with far more functionality. So we felt that it was highly efficient for resources as well. We were able to obviously outfit Clough Pike. So Clough Pike, obviously we need, we were going to need to put in teacher devices. So that was accomplished and that was the last building we had to upgrade in the last couple of years. Their devices were very old, seven or eight years old or more. And we were able to get those up to date as we had planned. But additionally, our team had to work with the construction teams. Those construction teams were contracted through the OFCC build. But there is a delicate dance that you do when you incorporate technology into an existing, existing infrastructure. And our teams worked with them very well. Mr. West, who's our network administrator, worked with those contractors to make sure everything came through, came through seamlessly and on day one, everything was operational. As you know, we've talked about it just briefly earlier, the Broadband Ohio Connectivity Grant was awarded to the district. That was 118,000 plus awarded by the state of Ohio. That was CARES funding. The, the state set aside 50 million for school districts all over the state to apply for funding. Some of the primary criteria of the grant was the money had to be spent by the end of this year, December 30 of 2020. And it had to be used to assist families who did not otherwise have reliable internet access. There were three primary focuses for that. One was to provide carrier-grade services like Cincinnati Bell, Spectrum or what have you in the home. The other was hotspots were an opportunity, the, the little MiFi hotspots, to provide those to families so that they could get internet. Or the last one was public Wi-Fi. Public Wi-Fi was simply extending the district's networks so that it would, it would be accessible in the publicly available spaces outside of our buildings. So in our parking lots and what have you, to, to give them the opportunity to connect after hours if they didn't have another way of connecting. So the carrier-grade stuff, the challenge we had with going with Cincinnati Bell or Spectrum is that the, the grant only pays up through the end of the year. So we could have gotten three or four months, but after that, the district was on the hook to pay the rest of that for however long that connection was needed. And we had no way of knowing how frequently it was being used, whether it was being used for academic purposes. We had, we had really no insight into the use of that. So we just had to hope that it was meeting its need. The hotspots, the benefit of that is we have more granular control of those. We, they are SIPA compliant, the Children's Internet Protection Act, which means they are filtered from inappropriate content, which is an obligation we have under the E-rate statute or E-rate regulations and what have you. So they are SIPA compliant filtering. And we can tell how much they're being used. And actually, as part of the program that we've entered into with T-Mobile, we are required to make sure that they're being used. And if they aren't, then request the device back to issue it to a student that will use it. And then the public Wi-Fi was the other option that we had. So previously, the district has published free internet locations around the county. So this McDonald's or that library or this Panera. And as, as little as that really, as little bit of a help as that was, it was really all we could do. So now, rather than telling families at Merwin Elementary, around Merwin Elementary, hey, if you go down to 125 and hang a left, you're going to find a building down there that you can go and, you know, buy a hamburger and get on the internet, they can drive into our parking lot and do the work that they otherwise would have had to go somewhere else to do. So part of it was the ongoing requirement of the district to pay the contract. The same thing is true with the hotspots. The grant will buy the hotspot itself and we have negotiated extremely aggressive monthly recurring charges on those hotspots. And it's something that we felt as a management team that we could absorb for 200 of those units. So, but to go much higher would have put us in a recurring spend that we didn't think the district could sustain long-term. Public Wi-Fi is something that we can put in, have it done by the end of the year and it will be there for as long as those hotspots run, which should be at least seven or eight years of service. So it was kind of a happy dance there between getting internet in the home or making something available long-term. Our support structure, so we're talking about COVID-19 impact right now and the, and the support structure had to change. We're in a very different place than we were nine or 10 months ago. We dedicated a personnel resource to WCOA. We wanted to make sure that that experience was not frustrating for users. And to have them drop an email and get a call back four hours later or the next day, we did not feel was going to make that a successful program. So we dedicated a resource to watching those form entries coming in, to answering the phone on the fly, to make that as, as painless as possible for those families that wanted to go into that, into that program. We schedule repair appointments. So in that call, if the technician cannot resolve the issue with the family, they'll schedule a window of time for the repair center. And we spread that out throughout the day so that we can cycle those repairs in and through. We follow all of the stop-to-spread protocols in the repair center. So the technician meets them, sanitizes the device, works the device. If they can fix it in the moment, they'll fix it in the moment in the 15 or 20-minute window. If they cannot, then they'll issue a spare to the family and, and let them go about their business while we put that in for a more intensive repair. We have heightened awareness in our face-to-face support in our classrooms, in our offices and what have you. And of course, our sanitation, sanitization procedures have been implemented district-wide. So anytime that we go in and work a device, I won't say anytime they go into a classroom to work a device, but anytime that we take a device into the repair center, put it back out from the repair center, those devices are sanitized. We've had to change our measures of success. So nine months ago, my team would look at the number of work orders we had open and say, we have 35, 40 work orders in the whole district. We're doing really well. Okay, we're on it, we're on track. And when things got really heavy, they might see 65 or 70 and they would start to fret. In this day and age, we can't look at it that way. Our primary measure of success today is does every student have a device in their hands that's working? How long does it take us to get it fixed and back in their hands so that we can minimize the lost learning time? That's our primary focus for success today. With the remote nature of WCOA students, we have to put a great deal more focus and time into each call. So rather than meeting with a student or, or dealing with a device that's been turned in and fixing it and turning it back around in about three minutes, we might spend 15 or 20 minutes on the phone just getting folks logged in and what have you. That takes, that's a lot more time, it's a lot more investment, but that first call resolution is critical. We don't want them to have the same problem tomorrow and have to call back tomorrow because the frustration level goes up. And that will impact our overall success in that program. So number one, or so the number of open work orders is no longer our primary measure of success. Because while work orders are important and the urgency of certain work orders is going to still rise to the top, our primary measure has to be, do all the kids have devices? Overall financial impact of COVID. So this is not all-inclusive by any means. We still go through and look every day at expenses to find out, did COVID cause this to happen? But some of the things we can key off of immediately are all of the Chromebooks we're purchasing to go, one to Wolf K-12, laptops that we have ordered for our WCOA teachers because the devices, the Chromebooks they're using are not up to the task. You know, the accessories that go with those, the hard shell cases to protect the Chromebooks, all of those things, the provisioning services to get all those Chromebooks ready that are part of that purchase package, all of those go into those expenses. And, and those things alone are, are, you know, around $960,000 this year. So, and again, as I said, there are more. We're identifying more expenses as we go. We've had a shift in labor. As I said before, we have a dedicated tech to WCOA. We used to have, last year, we would have a tech at the high school all the time and a tech at the middle school all the time. And the other techs would float between the district office, the elementary schools, you know, the maintenance shed and, and that kind of thing. This year, we've had to change that model. So we have our WCOA tech and we have a tech in the repair center fixing devices. And the other four techs are dynamic, based on work order and based on need. So, you know, previous years, the high school was, was so, I wouldn't want to say needy, but there was so much work there. It made sense to have someone there all the time. But this year, if we have a lull for three hours where the work orders are under control, we need to pull that person and send them to the elementary that needs that extra help. Or we might need to send them back to the repair center because they happen to get an influx of broken devices that day and we need to get them back in action. So we are much more fluid and much more dynamic this year with our resources, our personnel resources than we have been in years past. So the goals for the second semester, new Chromebook distributions, number one. As soon as those come in, we're going to start rolling them out just as quickly as we can, working with the curriculum department to make sure that we are not negatively impacting the work they're trying to do in the classrooms. We need to continue pursuing funding for internet connectivity for those financially insecure families so that we can continue to close that gap. We have the hotspots that we talked about, half of them are in hand. The other half are on the way. We have a criteria that we're building so that we can get those into families' hands. And what we need to do is find out what our utilization rates are and find out where else we can find grant funding because there's new programs that are popping up seemingly every day. We need to refine our support models to better serve our staff and students, whether they're face-to-face or WCOA. We have to keep looking at what we're doing and is it the most effective thing we can be doing? And is it serving not just the staff and the students, but the, the building administrators? Is it meeting their needs? Are they able to operate their buildings properly, given the support that we're offering? And we need to keep, continue to expand our security measures to enhance early warning of threats. So cybersecurity is something that was like really big on our, on our roadmap for this year until COVID happened. And then obviously, just getting devices out became such a priority. But this has not lost its importance. We just had to shift it a little bit back on the backburner, but it will come roaring back so that we can build a culture of awareness among all of our staff. Cybersecurity, as we all know, is everybody's job. It's not a tech thing, or a, you know, or a Larry thing, or a, you know, a firewall thing. It's everybody's job, and we have to build that awareness so that we can keep our students and our staff safe. And we will continue to update our device lifecycle planning for all of the major technology within the district. So this is something that we've been doing year over year. It's something where we identify, okay, how long, how old are our wired networks? How old are our wireless networks? Our classroom displays, the teacher devices in these buildings versus those buildings, and the students and what have you, so we can map out a long-term plan for refreshing these things that doesn't cause great spikes in revenue. Or expenditures, not revenue, expenditures. So, so that is my gallup through this presentation. Happy to take any questions.
That's $39.50 that you're waiting on. Are they manufactured? Is it shipping issue or not manufactured yet?
We have very little insight into that. Supply of those devices is three levels. There's the manufacturer, the distributor, and the vendor. So we can, we've talked to the, we talked to the vendor all day long, and we talk to the manufacturer all the time. It's the distributor in the middle that we have very little insight into what they're doing. So the manufacturer can tell us what they've told the distributor, and the vendor can tell us what they've told the distributor, but the distributor ultimately controls the middle piece of that flow. So ultimately, we just don't know.
Okay.
I have two questions. If we have students that happen to transfer out of the district at some point in time, you know, during the school year, now that everyone, you know, we're one-to-wolf with our Chromebooks, and now we're adding these hotspots in, how do we ensure that when that student or that family leaves, that we get that hardware back?
That's a great question. Ensure is an extremely strong term. The challenge is if the family disappears with the device, the $190, $200 Chromebook is not something the police are going to go chase them down for, you know? So, and then the hotspot is an $84 buy. Those things are, the value of each individual is so low, it's hard to really get any reaction. The only thing that we can do is to communicate with the last known contact information, the phone number, the email address, and that kind of thing, and then the charges go on the student account. And they live on the student account until that student account is settled, if it's ever settled. I know that that has been a challenge that we have talked about since the implementation of Wonder Wolf, and what we've done is watched what, how that has, how that has developed over time, and what we're seeing is there's not a high rate of that. In fact, often, the student or the parent leaves the device at the front desk of the building they attend before they go away. We do have some instances where the device has disappeared, and we email and we, and we call, there's either no answer or there's no response, and we basically put that on their account and effectively write it off as an effective loss.
Is it possible, and I don't know if this is a procedural thing that we would have to do, but, you know, in that situation where, say, you know, I leave, my family, we move to another district, and I take my Chromebook and my hotspot with me, well, I'm going to have to enroll in another district, my children, is it something that we can, is there a policy or procedure, something to put in place where, you know, we can't release their information that's needed for them to enroll in the new district until their hardware is repaired?
I'm sure there's law and regulation around that. I certainly don't know what that would be, but we can certainly look into that and find out for you, absolutely.
That was what my question was going to be.
Yeah, okay. My second question revolves around the cybersecurity.
Yes, ma'am.
How do we handle situations, and, you know, I'm hoping, you know, that the people that we have coming into our district act as substitute personnel are, you know, we do our procedures to vet them, but what's to stop, you know, Betty Sue from coming in one day, and she, you know, is given a password to log in, you know, she's subbing at, you know, whatever school, and she's given a password, and then decides, oh, you know what, I can go in there and hack something, you know? And they take that password and they take it onto another computer. Can they, is it a one-time password? Is it, you know, can they use it again? How do we stop them from hacking back indoors?
So substitutes are generally given, we have multiple sub accounts for each building, so AE Sub 1, AE Sub 2, so that they can handle multiple subs in a given day, and that is what they're used to log, that they log in with. Teachers are to share with that, with those accounts. So as far as vetting the individual, I don't know that I have a good answer for that. That would be something more that we would, we would talk through with, you know, what the procedures are with HR and what have you. The passwords rotate infrequently, I would say infrequently. When it comes to that kind of material, generally what is shared with them should be the lessons for the day, for the courses they're in. So if it's an elementary, it'd be whatever the lessons are for the day. If it's a middle school or a high school, it'd be for that content area, for those periods they'll be teaching. So it's generally lesson material, and it's, so I don't know, I mean, those sub accounts don't have access to, say, the student information system, for instance, or other staff information.
But they couldn't go home and log into Dazzle?
No, no, they wouldn't be able to go home and log into Dazzle. They would be able to go home and log into Google as the sub that they have the account for, but the only material they'd have available to them would be the educational record, not the, let me rephrase that statement, the lesson content that was shared with them for those lessons.
Okay, thank you.
Replacing the traffic shaper, are we, is this a program that we purchased for the firewall, or did we go through a company who is setting all that up for us?
It's a piece of hardware, and we went with Round Tower. So they had the most aggressive pricing. They were one of three or four vendors that were recommended by the manufacturer, and they are a local organization. So Round Tower went through the initial deployment with Mr. West, our network administrator. And Mr. West, as part of that purchase, we purchased training as well, which he's completed, and so now he is our administrator on that, on that device. So as we, as we roll out and go forward, he'll be adding greater and greater functionality to it.
And he'll train?
Yes, yes. Our, given the last six months, our standard operating procedure is to have two people on the team that know any given system. So we don't like to have just one person who, you know, who knows a system, so we want to have at least one other who is a backup, so we have some continuity planning. If somebody goes on vacation, you want to be able to make sure that we can, we can still do the work we need to do.
How much of the expenses that were on here, how much of that was covered by CARES Act funding? Was it the majority?
I believe all of it. Everything that we talked about was all CARES Act. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6.05 is Mr. Overby reporting on kind of his new role as chief operating officer.
Dramatic pause. Before I get started, I know you heard from Larry this meeting and Lance last meeting. It's an absolute pleasure to work with both of them, and how they are worried about them now, but they're also planning for five years from now and the work that they do. It's a pleasure to hear them speak and talk through the different parts of their job, and the passion for their work comes out each and every day, so. So as Mrs. Adams said, my job is shifting just a bit this year, and the center of excellence that I will be working within is performance. And so we're still kind of shaping and looking at the job, but these are some of the big, big buckets of my day, of my week, of my month and year. The day-to-day operations, as you, as Mr. Priest talked about, I do oversee technology operations, work with Lance and Larry on issues that may come up during the, during the day, but very frequently, if not daily almost, we're talking about the here and now, but also in the future, and decisions that we need to make and things that we're doing. I also actively support our secondary administration, Mrs. Brennan, Mr. Hudson, and Mr. Gettart. We meet at least monthly with, and when I say we, Mrs. Preston and I meet with them monthly to talk through their performance update, their goals, their priorities for the month. It's very important that, this year especially, that we're working with them to make sure that we're collaborating and we're creating this sense of consistency across the organization. As you know, in the past, I've worked heavily with partnerships, that will continue. Mr. Lefada will be taking over some of the agency work, like with Coalition for Drug-Free Claremont County, or the mental, the Suicide Prevention Coalition, things like that, things that I'm sitting on the, not the board, but the committees for those type of things. As my work goes into more of working with Mr. Romano, with the Business Advisory Council, and Mrs. Adams as well. Just last week, I met with a local university, Northern Kentucky University and the College of Informatics, and also American Modern wants to partner with us at the high school. So I'm meeting with Mr. Gettart tomorrow to kind of share what I've learned. And I think it's important that we see it from the district perspective to make sure these partners kind of understand the strategic plan, where we want to go and things, and then we kind of pass that off to what building that may see fit, and working with them. And a lot of times, our partners want to work with our high school and some of our middle school, and we're trying to create a K-12 kind of opportunities, not only in the social service agencies, but also in those companies that they're getting into our elementary and our middle school and high school as well. Accountability, I think I hit the lottery this year. I've been assigned to work with Mr. Stahl, who was our EMIS coordinator, and he is a professional. He seems like he's been in his whole life with his dad being the former technology director years and years ago, but that accountability in EMIS is how we are funded in many ways. So the idea for me to learn what Lou is working on, and how it connects to our funding model and things like that, to make sure that Lou is supported, as you know, we've added an assistant, so to make sure that transition goes well from, to take Lou off of the day-to-day operations of EMIS into more, and use some of his talents and skills and things that he's passionate about as well. And then something that's, my whole career, I've been always passionate about innovation and technology, and how it fits together, and how it can best serve our kids. So the pieces that, I'll be working with Mrs. Adams on more horizon thinking, where we want to be in five years, how do we get there? And then working with Mr. Romano, again, a lottery here with his expertise of really working through that we're constantly looking at our board policy, and bringing adjustments to you for your approval and things like that. One thing that we did in the past was look at our 5000, which is a lot of our student services discipline and things. So it intrigued me of how, how all of that works together, and to kind of expand that to the whole policy is exciting. And then the district CCIP, that will work with our district strategic plan. And this year, we are one, we're in the first phase of the, it's called a one-needs assessment, that Mrs. Preston and I actually are going to learn more about tomorrow, from three to five. So then asking, I think, some of the best questions that the Department of Education has asked us, and then how do we quantify that information and make sure that it goes into our strategic plan and our CCIP. So short-term goals is to continue to evaluate and adjust our operations and technology. Mr. Priest talked about a little bit of that tonight with the dynamic plan that we have, but we may have to adjust. It's just the nature of COVID. Or working with Mr. Perry, we were already talking about, okay, what adjustments do we have to consistently make with our stop-the-spread protocol to make sure that we're best serving our kids and keeping our students and staff safe? We're going to establish the data infrastructure team this semester as well. You talked about Dazzle. Dazzle's kind of our lifeline for student information. We want to evaluate that to make sure that's the best, best system that we have to meet the needs of 2020, but also all the ancillary systems that go along with this. You'd be surprised how much data we can collect. We're, I think we're data-rich, we're kind of analytic-poor sometimes. So what we want to do is be able to take the information that we have on our students and make data-informed decisions, but sometimes that bottlenecks at the teacher level. So what we're hoping to work through over the next, it's an 18-month project, is to figure out if Dazzle's our best solution, or is there a better solution out there? But then all of these ancillary pieces that we can continue to make decisions, data-informed decisions, that best meet the needs of our students, especially now where, as we've talked about, there's some gaps that may have existed, or some inequities that we're trying to fill, this is going to be very important work. So that team will come together. And then, as I mentioned before, Ellie and I being very consistent in our approach to coaching and supporting our building principals. Every Tuesday, we're in two to three buildings, meeting with the building principals one-on-one or two-on-one, essentially a group, and just seeing what their needs are, supporting them, making sure that we're moving our strategic plan forward. As I talked about, working with Mr. Romano around the new policy recommendation process that we'll be enacting, and then working with Mrs. Preston on the CCIP and the one-needs assessment. Quite honestly, that's going to be probably my biggest learning opportunity, is the learning kind of the, behind-the-scenes of the CCIP and how that operates. COVID impact from my perspective, and the importance, and there were some technical things that Larry and Lance had talked about, was, I wanted to just talk a bit about the importance of planning. Mrs. Adams brings, brought a lot to our district, but one of the things she brought was the importance of a strategic plan, writing it down and then executing it. Well, that's, I can still remember March, what, 13th, we had, we had to get in that downstairs and socially distance even at that point, and trying to really try to figure out what these next six months were going to look, or the last seven months now. But we had a, we came up with our plan, we implemented a plan, and we worked the plan. And then over the summer, when we put together the district playbook around stop-the-spread protocols and things, pretty comprehensive process that we went through. Well, that, from, from that work, I think we've had a pretty successful first quarter in keeping our students and staff safe. The idea of flexibility and being agile, if something doesn't work, let's not force it to work, but let's, let's go back to the table to find a solution that does work. The importance of communication, is it 350,000 emails that were sent, or some crazy number? But the importance of communication, and as we've gotten, we've gotten better at being more succinct over time, and Jeff, Mr. Ryle, Mrs. Adams, and others that work with it, it's become very fine-tuned in what we're, what we're sending to our families and our staff. The importance of, the equity piece, Mr. Priest talked about, students that may not have access to internet, staff that may not have access to internet at home, technology deficits that some of our students may have. All of those things really, a light was kind of shone on those really quickly in March, and how many devices we got out, and how many, how many, how many meals were delivered and things like that. And then the importance of partnerships. We could not have got through the last seven months without the district partnerships that we have with Union Township and our other municipalities that we work with. But I want to focus, as we've talked about in the board, about food inequities. If we didn't have Cincy Kids for Kids, and Empower Youth, and St. Veronica, and others, some of our students may have gone hungry over this time period, and many of those things were even enacted over the summer, where we had to put new systems in place. So some of our business partnerships, let's say, that were working with our kids during the school day, had to lay dormant for a while, but those other partnerships that we had continued to nurture really, those folks stepped up, and I, I know Mrs. Adams has highlighted them in the past. So, so for me, that planning, the flexibility, communication, really focusing on equity and partnerships, some of the things of COVID, we're going to keep, and many of them are in this, what I'm talking about here right now. So current projects, again, in our, in our district themes of equip and engage every learner, working with Mr. Lefada and Mr. Priest on equity from a technology standpoint, but also meeting those needs that some of our students need from food, or clothes, or different things that exist. We are working very hard to understand the design team understanding and planning, meaning this is a very new process for all of us, and we're learning together. We had a wonderful, I don't want to steal any thunder that Mrs. Adams may have, but we had a wonderful meeting on Thursday, on Friday last week with our district leadership team, and really setting the stage for design team thinking and working within teams. One of the other things, it may not seem innovative, but it really is, is to have responsive meetings. Not just meet-to-meet, but meet to come out with an actual purpose, and then some actions and some accountability with that. So kind of resetting ourselves, I mean, I look at all of you, and how many Zoom meetings have you been in, in the last six months, seven months? It seems like they've added and added more, but how do we make those meetings? So kind of resetting ourselves, I mean, I look at all of you and how many Zoom meetings have you been in in the last six months, seven months? It seems like they've added and added more, but how do we make those meetings responsive, proactive, actionable, that we're seeing results from those? And then finally, passion area of mine, and I can already tell with working with Mr. Romano, same thing, of how do we increase our Business Advisory Council and the partnerships that we have, that they're helping us with the heavy lift of the future? And then finally, we've heard this from our administrators, that they want to do this for their teachers, is to provide actionable feedback, very specific feedback on how those student, teachers can improve. Even the teachers that we saw tonight, that they, everyone has areas that they can improve in, and it's really hard sometimes to work with some of the best, to give them feedback. Well, I feel the same way with our administrators, that we have some of the very best administrators I've ever worked with, but how do we continue to give them actionable feedback that they could even be better? And then increase the community partnerships, as I talked about, to new, hopefully, with Northern Kentucky and American Modern and then some others that exist. How do we continue to expand that work? They're docking on our door still, which is amazing, even during COVID. I'm not sure you all have heard yet, but Purina is coming to Claremont County, very exciting, bringing what, over 300 jobs and I want to say half a billion-dollar project when it's, so what a commitment, and that's just right down 32 for us. So how do we get on the ground floor of some of those exciting pieces and things? And then champion the data infrastructure team. Lou will be leading the team, I will be championing the team and making sure that that team gets off the ground in a very successful way. So like, I sprinted, Mr. Parise galloped, so are there any questions for me?
Other than thank you for all of your hard work?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, I want to thank Mrs. Adams for continually to push me and the members of our team to really embrace this work. It's going to make our district even better. So we're excited for the work and excited for the outcomes that come from it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6.06 is superintendent committees. I know this week we met as a finance team as well as facilities, so would you guys like to report in on any of that? I know you referenced several things during the votes.
I think one thing that we discussed in finance that we haven't brought up really is talking about the county reassessment and valuations and how that's starting to come through and people are going to start seeing their tax bills and whether they go up or down and how initial reaction from people might be, well, the district just passed a levy and here goes my, here goes my taxes. And just, you know, people just need to kind of calm down and just understand how it's, you know, check their valuation and see, you know, how the county has reevaluated their properties, and that's a driver of increases or decreases. But I think other than that, we didn't discuss a whole lot more other than what we've already talked about between finance and facilities.
I would agree.
Yep.
Again, I echo what Mr. Romano said earlier about how much we appreciate you guys working with us kind of behind the scenes to dig deeper into issues and to vet plans and to gather your input and direction. It's very helpful to us and we appreciate that. Item 6.07 is superintendent's comments. So first of all, just want to remind everyone that Election Day is coming up next week and to remind everyone to vote. And because there's going to be some extra polling places here in our office area, we are going to work off-site on that Election Day, just to cut down on traffic and just make it as convenient for people as possible and not add to it. We've also added, and I think Mr. Parise, or not Parise, Perry told you about this a while ago, we added the middle school as an election site, again, just trying to help out with some places that weren't available. So our schools are shut down for that day for professional learning, so students will be at home, and we're just going to try to make this as convenient and helpful for people as possible. We launched a thought exchange today, two separate ones, one specifically for the staff to understand fully what's going really well for them and where they need more support. And I think it'll be a time for them to really just kind of unload and get some things off their chest. I mean, obviously, we've been taking feedback all along, but it's always this time of year in October, as we're switching from nice, beautiful, sunshiny weather to the darker, colder days of early, late fall and early winter, that kind of the stress level rises a little bit. So I think we will learn a lot from our staff, and as you know, they've taken on a lot more this school year, and I think in kind of hearing from them will help us refine and improve our plans. We also have launched a thought exchange separately with our families and students in grades five through 12. So we'll be able to amplify their voice and find out from their family point of view what's going well for them and what could be improved. We'll be able to look at the data from a WCOA perspective to understand the experience and how it's different from a brick-and-mortar experience as we pull through the data. So should be very interesting and very helpful as we plan for not only the rest of this quarter, but the rest of the school year. As you know, COVID-19 spread is kind of increasing in, especially in Hamilton County. We're still doing pretty well here in Claremont County, but just in general across the state, the cases seem to be rising. And we're very proud of what's happening here and how we've been able to really limit exposure and limit the spread. What I would just want to keep on everyone's radar, though, is the fact that we have built a responsive plan on purpose, that we may need to pivot it at any time. And so the kinds of things that, I don't say that to make people fearful, it's just, I think it's, it would be less likely for us to have COVID-19 spread and a problem in that way, less likely for that to happen, more likely to have operational issues, whether that's staff on quarantine or staff ill. Our subsituation, as we've mentioned, is very, very challenging. We have fewer subs this year to cover the load as, than we have had in the past, and it's always been a challenge ever since I've been here, so it's like, it's elevated. We are opening up specials back in the elementaries for second quarter, so we'll be opening up art, music, PE again, and some STEM activities for our elementary students. So that bank of support that we had from that staff is closing down, so that could certainly compromise our ability to find subs and to find coverage. And it's just something that, it could be likely that if we're struggling with subs, that I might have to shut down a third grade in one school or a fourth grade in a school versus shutting down the whole school. So I'm just anticipating that as we get into flu season, colder weather, where there's more illness on a regular basis, into having to do some unique things. Our default will always be to remain in school five days a week. We think that's very important and we've been very successful, and we want to continue that as long as we can. I just, you know, we were, we were always thinking there might have to be changes kind of going into the year, but now we've kind of settled in. I want to just make sure I keep people kind of on their toes, thinking about their plans for their families, so that we could, to shift to a remote learning plan on a dime, and we would shift to a hybrid plan more, with some more thoughtfulness.
Mrs. Adams, did you want to mention our past practice of maybe combining rooms and why that would not be a reasonable thing?
Yeah, there's, that is added to our challenge for sure. There's two things that we've done as a past practice that I don't love, but it's just been kind of out of necessity, and that has been to, if a class was, inside the middle school and high school, you can kind of do internal coverage using people on their planning periods. It works a little better. In the elementaries, we would just combine. Mrs. Smith's class would combine with Mrs. Jones' class, and you would put them all together. Well, under COVID situation, that is not a response that we think can be impactful because you're just, you're causing more issues. And so that's not really an option, and we've also had to have our principal sub a lot in the elementaries, that we are really trying to limit to the very greatest extent possible because it's not really the best use of their time and especially under the level of need that we are dealing with this school year. So some things, we have done some things. We have started to recruit more subs as a common practice, which happens every year, but we're just, we're trying to ramp that up. And we have cut down any professional development, like anything that we could, that would keep us from having to pull kids, teachers out of the classrooms. We have controlled all the variables we can control, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And we just know the numbers always go up this time of year, so it just makes us a little more vulnerable. But it's important to us right now that we believe that our kids get back into specials and that we do everything we can to make sure that they get that well-rounded experience. And so that does kick off this week. The other thing that's just kind of overarching, and I'm assuming that we'll learn a lot about this as we unpack the thought exchange, but it's just really understanding people's state of mind as people are cooped up inside a little more as we go into second semester and the sunshine has gone away and the colder temperatures. Like, I do expect for us to need to spend more time on the social, emotional learning, mental health, mental wellness of both our students and our staff, and that everyone just needs to be kind of vigilant on that. Working hard to move your body, get the proper nutrition, get sleep, and just things that we might, we kind of get on automatic pilot and just kind of do the grind, we need to be mindful of as a staff and as a student body to take care of ourselves and take care of others during this time to help us to continue to have the success that we've had at the beginning of the school year. Do you guys have any further questions or anything that you'd like just more information on at this point?
So with the, WCOA, the semester switch?
Yes.
When's the, when are the deadlines for making those choices, whether parents are going to keep their students in WCOA, whether they want to move them back into the building, or when someone who has kids in the building might want to move them to WCOA? When is that process?
That's a great question. Well, this, actually on Friday, is when the first level of kind of temperature check has happened. And so there's a survey sent out to families, and right now, it's just to say, hey, are you, are you thinking about staying in your current educational model or are you thinking about changing? So we're just trying to get a lay of the land, and it's not a kind of sign your name on the dotted line step yet. And so that'll come here over the next couple of weeks. We think it's important to get as much time under our belt here in November with the changing of the weather and just kind of changing circumstances in our community to have everyone experience that before they have to say. But we'll have that all wrapped up and completed before we leave for winter break. And so I'll have some more specific details and deadlines for you soon, but that's kind of the, here in the horizon in the next two months. And it will be made very clear to families that this, you know, just switching is not like hit my easy button from, you know, staples, like that there is a lot of heavy lifting that needs to take place because of, it's just very disruptive. And so we certainly want to keep that as an option, and we will certainly work the plan, but there are lots of layers of details to work through. And just, you can't make assumptions. For instance, if you had a teacher in WCOA, you can't assume you'll just go back to the classroom and have that same teacher and just pick up right where, you know, you left off last year. Like, there are certainly some hiccups in terms of the kinds of curriculum you've been focused on, on WCOA versus the classroom and vice versa. It's not insurmountable, it's just not as seamless. Like, if we could wave a wand and make it a super smooth ride, it's just not that way at this point. And so we're going to be really upfront with our parents about the opportunities, and we'll have to get creative with those solutions because we can't afford for classrooms in brick-and-mortar to explode. Let's say everybody at Clough, as just an example, wanted to come back, will flood those classrooms and their teachers and WCOA. So now we are, we have a situation here. And so we're going to have to, we could possibly have to move teachers back in, there could or could not be space for them. So there's just lots of, we're reinventing the school. We're doing August work again in November, December. So we just can't make assumptions, and we want people to make the best decision for their families and just know it's going to be another, you know, you heard us coming to you and all kind of leading up to the school year of the heavy lift that it was to get it situated, it's going to be that again in the middle of the year. It's going to be very disruptive, and we're ready for it, we're bracing for it, and we will do whatever we need to to serve our students, but it's not, nothing about it is easy, so.
When it comes to pivoting from, to a remote, for whatever reason, you had mentioned that even considering grade levels or whatever, but are, whether, will weather be a factor in that? I mean, if we know that a major snowstorm's coming, is it, do we plan on snow days as usual, or is that a, we're going to make, you know, the snowstorm's going to hit Thursday, we're just going to plan for Friday to be remote learning and we're going to shut the buildings down?
My crystal ball is going to have to get really, really. We are certainly talking about snow days and what winter weather brings to this scenario when everybody has a device and we have this ability to keep the continuity of learning alive. We are actually, we have a meeting scheduled with WCEO, CE, EA tomorrow to do some conversations about that and kind of get our game plan on. We've met internally about it, but we haven't scaled it to the teachers yet. But we definitely want to continue to think as creatively as possible and keep learning going to the best extent possible. And yes, if there's something that makes sense that I can, in the crystal ball, see and logically do that is going to be best for students, we will certainly be as thoughtful and as, you know, plan ahead as much as we can. It's, some of it's just hard to say, it's just hard to say.
I can't wait to see on the TV ticker where they have the school closings, that West Claremont's having a wow day.
Yes.
Will be the talk of the town.
Very exciting.
And then my last question is on, on Election Day, is the, is the Board of Elections providing additional support and security for buildings? Because I think all of our elementaries are polling places, and now the elementary, and I think because Crossroads isn't allowing that they're doing additional here, I'm glad to hear that you guys are going to move out for the day, but, I mean, does the Board of Elections cover that? Do we cover that? How do we, I mean?
I haven't heard of anything specifically that the Board of Elections is doing, and most of those, most of that planning and work has been with Mr. Parise. He's not here tonight to be able to like speak to that specifically, so that's something I would have to, not Parise. Great, I see you. I meant Lance, Mr. Perry. Tonight's his daughter's birthday, so we decided he needed to be with her. So I just, I need to get those specifics because he did all that organizing, and I'm just unsure.
I'm sure it's all under control. I was just, since this is the last time we meet before Election Day, I just wanted to make sure we had our.
I know in the spring, what I can recall, in the spring when we were still having school and there was going to be an election, you remember that famous election?
Oh, yeah.
We did have plans, we had hired increased security for that event ourselves, and so I, that makes me believe that there probably isn't any special Board of Election action because we were going to handle that internally. But that was mainly because our students were in school.
Yep.
And we wanted to have that, the students will not be in school, so that kind of changes a little bit of the need.
But I think there would be still a need for wiping things down, like doorknobs as they're coming in.
Or custodians, I thought that even meant like more security, like.
I did, but I mean, that was also part, I mean, just kind of all rolled in, yeah, but.
Our custodians will be doing that. They'll be very vigilant that day, and Lance has a plan with them.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Lance, just in, just in from Lance Perry, no additional security provided by the Board of Elections?
Good to see that he's watching.
I have a great team and they always have my back, so it's pretty amazing, even virtually.
Instead of having a football game on, he has on the board meeting, so, yeah.
Well, and yes, and as I'm looking down, because I wasn't doing that before, Mrs. Preston, let me know that November 20th is going to be the deadline for that decision about your educational model. So like right before Thanksgiving and that window, that should give people enough time to kind of really reflect on their own personal circumstance and what's to come. Thank you for those questions, that's helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? That's all I have, thank you.
Moving on to board business, Mr. Chumley?
Well, my favorite way to start board meetings is student presentations or teacher awards, so tonight was fun. So I want to congratulate Ms. Flanagan and Ms. Megan. The OSBA Delegate Assembly Business Meeting is Thursday, so excited for that. And be good to report some, whatever I observed there this week at our next business meeting.
Awesome, thank you. Mrs. Delaney?
Congratulations to Mrs. Flanagan and Ms. Merrily on their outstanding successes and recognition. Math is, math, I'm just going to say it, math stinks.
Ha, nonsense, nonsense.
Is that the new math or the old math?
All math. But it's a tough, it's a tough thing to teach, and if. But it's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to teach and if, if you have, if you've got a gift, I applaud, I applaud those women for having that gift. I want to call out something that was at the end of every one of our presentations tonight, together as one community. I want to thank our community for entrusting us with your support with this past levy because COVID-19 has been just a horrific event for everyone, but I think it's, it's charged us and I really feel passionate that our district has taken COVID-19 and we've been forced to sharpen our tools and figure out better ways to do what we have to do to make our children have the educational experience that they deserve. And I've really, really seen it over the last probably three to four weeks, but there's passion and energy and our leaders are able to do their jobs and, and make so much more for our students. And I just want our community to know that without their support, we wouldn't be where we are today and have our leaders being able to continue to charge through. I mean, every day is a new day, but it, it's really, you know, I think COVID-19 for us as, as a large team, it, it's been great because we've, we've wrestled the beast and we continue to wrestle it for the better of, of our children.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Schaaf?
Echo the, thank you to the, our teachers, our wonderful teachers, both recognized and unrecognized, that, I mean, I know that everybody's doing a great job. One other thing that brought up in, in our committee meetings that I neglected to mention was just the gratefulness that comes out of our administrative team for the community and their support and how we wouldn't be in a position that we're in to be able to wrestle the beast without the support of the community. And I, I can tell as a community member, not being in the office with these people every day, that, you know, they, that's truly the, you know, that's always in the back of their mind, that, you know, they're serving our kids and serving our community and they're very thankful for the support the community brings. One thing I wanted to bring up and only because a neighbor has an eighth grader, eighth grader in cheer, that I think eighth grade had competition and they came out as first place champions in their first competition, so I wanted to recognize them. But also, and then the last, my last thing is, politics aside, our, one of our greatest gifts as Americans is the right to vote and we get to do that in a few days, so I encourage everyone to exercise that right. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Rudy?
No, nothing tonight.
I wanted to say, express my appreciation for all of our fall coaches for doing everything that they could to make sure that we had a fall season for all of our sports. It was a little rocky at some times because of a few people testing positive or exposing and getting exposed, but they did a fantastic job to ensure that they had a season. And so thank you to all of our coaches that, that made that happen. We also had numerous students that were recognized as athlete of the week because of their accomplishments. So in spite of all of the craziness around us involved with COVID, they were able to excel and we're very proud that they represent us so well. Congratulations to them.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
So our next board meeting, do we have any reason to go into executive session? I don't think we do.
No, we do not.
Okay. Our next board meeting is on Monday?
Nope.
Nope, Thursday? I'm reading, Thursday?
November 19th.
November 19th? Thank you, I've got it in front of me, I don't have my glasses on. Thursday, November 19th, and we need a motion to adjourn.
It's a moot.
Mr. Rudy and Mr. Chumley. I don't think we have to have discussion, roll call.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Delane?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you for coming this evening to join us.